Order with the Pledge of Allegiance and Treasurer Rice has a flag for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Awesome. Clerk Cody, would you do roll, please?
I'm trying to fix my screen here. Okay, so when we do roll call, you'll state your name and then your location, Isabella County Union Township if you're here. So Supervisor Milky.
Here, Isabella County Union Township, Michigan, the United States of America.
Treasurer Rice.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
Trustee Bills.
Here, Isabella County Union Township, State of Michigan.
Trustee Brown.
Here, Isabella County Union Township, State of Michigan.
Trustee Houk.
Here, Isabella County, or I'm sorry, Bill Houk, Isabella County Union Township, Michigan.
Trustee Thering.
Here, James Thering, Union Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
And Clerk Cody here, Isabella County Union Township, Michigan. All are here.
Okay, we have approval of agenda. You have it before you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda before us.
Support.
Port was from, I heard Connie, what did you hear, Lisa?
Well, I said at the same time, so.
I heard, I heard a couple.
We'll go with Bills.
All right, any discussion on that? Seen none, would you take roll call, Cody? Not roll call, sorry. Would you take a vote on that, please?
Thering.
Yes.
Milky?
Yes.
Cody, yes. Rice?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
And Houk?
Yes.
All yes.
All right, unanimous. I believe we have no presentations tonight that I'm aware of, and so we'll head to public hearings, the first of which, we have two tonight. First of which is a special assessment public hearing over on McGurk Street and neighboring roads there. Just for clarity for whoever's watching, a special assessment was petitioned by that neighborhood. They've requested an overlay on the road and asked the township to assist in financing and setting up assessment district for that to happen. And so this is, we've already had some meetings on this, but this is the actual formal public hearing. And manager, would you care to add anything else to that?
Yeah, just to ensure that the new members are orientated, the Board of Trustees approved a resolution, the first resolution related to this matter back on August 12th. At that point, we'd received the formal petition. It was reviewed for sufficiency, a certificate of validity was certified by the township supervisor. Resolution number one was presented and approved by the board, which amongst a couple of other things required the administration to get a formal cost estimate from the road commission. The Board of Trustees acted again on October 28th. And they declared their tentative intention to make the improvement. They tentatively designated the Special Assessment District. Instead, set the time and date for the public hearing, which is now, the cost estimate for this project is a little over eighty-two thousand dollars. It's two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-two cents per front lot. The cost estimate was properly filed with the township clerk and made available for public inspection. The notice of the public hearing was properly noticed in the paper and mailed to the residents. And so now we have a public hearing, which is an opportunity for Board of Trustees to hear from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll, just a note, we're going to open the public hearing here in a minute, but I want to make sure the public knows how to get our attention on the board, being this is a virtual meeting under Zoom. If you move your mouse to the bottom of your screen, a toolbar will appear. And if you haven't shown already, you can click on participant. That will open up a window of the list of individuals in the meeting. And then, once you have that participants list open, we have bottom, at the bottom of the participants window is a raise hand button. And so we'll use that to signify that you would like the attention of the board and request the floor. And with that, we'll open up the public hearing for the McGurk Special Assessment at 7:06 PM. And I see Phil Squatrito is asking for the floor.
Hi there, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, so, uh, I live over there, that's my home for the past thirty-plus years. So first, I want to thank the, I want to thank the trustees for working with my neighbors. I wasn't one of the lead people with this. There were a couple of folks that organized this. But thank you both to you and also to the past board for working with them and bringing this to fruition. Those roads were done in the early, early nineties, so they're coming up close to thirty years old. So these are the types of improvements that need to be done over time. I do have a few questions. I don't know if this is, if this is the appropriate place for questions, but I'll go ahead and ask them anyway. I want to confirm that I'm reading this correctly, that the cost estimate that's shown here, it says construction cost estimate ten percent increase over amount provided by ICRC. That means that the amount I'm looking at here on the page already has that ten percent cushion built in based on what was quoted in 2020, is that right? And then, my other two questions would be, how much lead time, if any, are we going to get as to when the project is actually going to be done? In other words, is someone going to tell us, okay, they're going to be out next week to do this? Or are they just going to show up out of the blue one day? And then my last question is, for those who opt for the lump sum payment, when is that going to be due relative to when the work is actually done?
Phil, I'm going to answer you by saying that to make sure that we give you the proper answers, that you call Township Hall and/or myself, I can help facilitate that if necessary. You have myself. Because I don't want to give you the wrong answers unless our manager wants to address that tonight. How about we connect in the coming days?
Yeah, that sounds fine. I don't need, obviously, it's not happening immediately, so I don't need an answer right away, but if there's someone in particular I should talk to, let me know that too. I'd be happy to talk to them directly.
Okay, I'll reach out to you, okay?
Okay, thanks, bud.
Or you can call me too.
Okay, but again, thank you for, thank you for helping to make this go forward.
All right, thanks, thanks for being here. By the way, for those that are not aware, Phil Squatrito is our illustrious Chair on the Planning Commission. Do we have any other public members that would like to address the board? Mark, there's P-Day May. PD May. Mark, you muted.
I just asked her to unmute, and it looks like.
I did. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Pat Mayfield, and I headed up the petition initially after talking to Mark and several individuals at the township. That's been a little over a year and a half ago, and it seems like it has been quite a lengthy process going forward, as I think everyone can agree on that. But I'm glad we're at the point we're at. A couple concerns I have after reading the letter that came out several weeks ago. It indicated there could be an increase in that quoted twenty-five sixty-six amount based on, you know, what the need was at the time. I have taken it upon myself to call Mr. Gaffney, the Road Commissioner, and ask him, he has recently been in the neighborhood because as a almost daily walker this last summer, I see a great deal of decline on our inside corners. The roads, you know, as the road would tee off McGurk. And I don't, he said he has not been out here to look at it again, so that is a concern of mine. And like Phil said, you know, it would be nice to know exactly, maybe not exactly, but a timeframe, basic timeframe of when we might expect this to happen. So can you address, you know, the original petition said it told the residents it would not be more than twenty-eight hundred and thirteen dollars. So if the letter indicated there could be an increase in that, you know, I think it was brought up at a previous meeting. If people objected going over that twenty-eight thirteen, how would that be done?
Pat is, have you answered, ask your questions because I want to respond.
I have. That's all I have tonight, Brian.
Yeah, I understand your concerns, and I'm going to tell you the same thing I told Phil. I'm happy to talk with you because I don't, I don't want, I'm not prepared to answer your question off the top. I don't want to be incorrect, but let's connect and we'll have that discussion.
Okay.
And you and I both have ourselves.
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
Yes.
I am taking Thursday off, you know.
Yes.
Okay.
As we should.
Thank, thank you for coming.
Yes.
All right, looking, looking for any other hands? Trustee Houk?
Yeah, yeah, Brian, I wanted to just ask a question, so the public might know this. So far, you've mentioned a couple of times for people to get in touch with you. Maybe I should have asked you this in private, but just so the public, you know, can find out. Are you thinking about establishing some office hours? Like, would you maybe be available for people to talk to? Maybe, I don't know, Thursday from one to five or whatever, maybe Tuesdays one to five? I'm just, you know, just so the public knows. I didn't know if you were going to be in your office at the Township Hall.
I probably won't initially, but only because of pandemic. And my thought is that I would be trying to make myself available. I haven't worked on any kind of schedule or how that would work. But I have spent some time on that bill and we'll talk about that more.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I should have talked to you about that in private.
That's my hope.
Okay.
Do we see any other hands out?
I do not.
I do not. We'll give it just another second if someone's having trouble. Uh, seen none. We will close the public hearing at seven fourteen on my clock.
Trustee Bills' hand is up.
Oh, my apologies.
So.
I was, I just had one question. So what Pat said was, if the price is over the original quoted amount, wouldn't you have to go back and ask all of the residents then if they want to go forward with it?
I think I know the answer to that, but I don't want to say because I think I might be wrong. Mark, would you mind, just, the law, law has restrictions on what can and cannot be done regarding that. And I just don't know the details off the top of my head, but for the most part, that's, it's not going to go up with, unless there's an exception. The law does allow for it, but it's, can you speak to that?
I think to give a fulsome answer, I'd want to look at things specifically. There are, there are processes for, if the actual work comes in high or lower, depending on certain percentages, certain things are allowed to happen. And if they exceed those percentage, percentages, other things are happening. We have built into the price the ten percent increase over what we just received or what we most recently received from the road commission. And that's because we haven't actually done the formal bidding yet. And this is a project that's slated to be done in the twenty-one construction season, which would be the spring of twenty-one at the earliest. This is a multi-step process. I think we're on resolution number two of four, I believe, four resolutions before it was, before it's finalized. And there are also additional requirements for more public hearings down the road.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have a second public hearing. This is for fiscal year 2021 budget, just for public information. This township body is required by law, yes?
You need to close that first public hearing.
Oh, I did, I closed it, we had a question, so I thought I closed it at seven fourteen.
Okay.
I thought I did. Did anybody else hear it? I heard it in my head.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So we have a fiscal 2021 budget public hearing. And I was just wanting to describe that per Michigan law, this body must pass our fiscal twenty-one budget by year end. And so this is an opportunity, although the budget's been out on our website for a long period of time, this is the opportunity for the public to provide any input that they would like. And with that, manager, do you want to add to that at all?
Again, just for orientation purposes, the Board of Trustees received the manager's recommended budget. I believe it was October first. It was presented at a, at a Board of Trustee meeting in some detail on October 28th. The Board of Trustees held a study session on November ninth, and at your November tenth meeting, you set the date for the public hearing to be held tonight. And again, it's an opportunity for the board to hear comments from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, same instructions for getting the board's attention, if you'd like the floor. And this is primarily to hear comments from the public. The intent is not to be a comment, question, answer, period. If you have questions, you're certainly able to reach out to the township. And with that, we'll open up the public hearing at seven nineteen PM. I'll give it one more minute for somebody to have the opportunity to jump in. I guess seeing none. We will close public hearing at seven nineteen PM. And with that, we'll go to a public comment. Public comments restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. This is an opportunity for comments only. Questions to the board will not be answered at this time. If you have specific questions and would like, that you would like answers to, please call Township Hall, nine eight nine seven seven two four six zero zero. And with that, a public comment is open at seven twenty PM. Mark, we have Jessica Lapp.
I just asked Ms. Lapp to unmute herself.
Hi, my name is Jessica Lapp. I'm an applicant for the Planning Commission. I've been a resident in the township since 2002, and I'm just calling here to introduce myself to the board.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for hands. Not seeing any other requests for the floor. We'll close public comment at seven twenty-one PM. And we'll move on to our agenda, item eight, reports, boards, and comments. We have a list of boards and commissions that some appointments are needed. I do want to address just a note to our board members that we do have quite a few seats that will be opening in early 2021. I'll be making an effort to reach out to those people. See if they would like to reapply, and we'll make sure that we give the public an opportunity to also apply for those positions. So look through those dates if you haven't already, but there's quite a few seats, the terms are ending. So with that, our current representative to the Planning Commission is our clerk Cody. And so we need to reappoint a board member, I shouldn't say reappoint, we need to appoint a board member to represent us on the Planning Commission. And I would be happy to take a motion or discussion on that.
I believe for the Planning Commission, you have to nominate them.
Oh, it is? That needs to come from the supervisor for the board appointment?
Yeah.
All right, very good. With that, I have had discussions with some of the board members regarding this. But I'd like to nominate Clerk Cody to be a representative to the Planning Commission.
I support.
All right, any other discussion on that?
No.
How do you feel, Lisa?
For the minutes, which one gets the support?
Pick one.
Apparently, you got a lot of sport here, Lisa. Nobody else wants a job, I guess.
No.
He does a good job.
Just for the record, James Thering came on our Planning Commission this past year, and we can't have two board members on, and so he was gracious enough to also resign his post just last week. So thank you for serving on that, James, and congratulations on becoming a Board of Trustee member. Any other, any discussion on the motion on the floor? The motion is to appoint Lisa Cody as representative to the Planning Commission.
What's the expiration date of?
Thank you, with, well, it's your term, right? So that would be,
Well, there's three terms, Brian.
I'm sorry?
They're three-year terms.
But I thought those are for the normally appointed.
Oh, okay.
Right?
I'm sorry, yeah, sure.
I believe this is for the duration of the clerk's term in this case, unless he wants to, yeah, unless she wants to step down and give somebody else an opportunity, it's, it would be for the full four years. So November twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, roll call. Okay, so roll call. Bills?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Cody, yes. Houk?
Yes.
And Milky?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you very much. For those that have served with the Planning Commission before, it's a lot of work, and so we're gracious for your willingness to do that, Lisa. Board of Trustees also needs to appoint an EDA representative. The law is fairly clear on who that needs to be. But, so I'm not sure, if someone was willing to make the motion, the law says the supervisor must be that representative.
I'll make the motion for Supervisor Milky to be the representative on the EDA.
Work.
Any discussion? Okay, Clerk Cody, would you take?
Okay, you guys just say your expiration date.
Oh, that would also be, sorry, so the motion on the floor is to make the supervisor the EDA representative for the Board of Trustees term ending November 24th, 2024.
Twenty twenty-four. On the twentieth, sorry.
November twentieth, 2024. At noon.
Yes, actually. Okay, let's go with Houk?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
Cody, yes. Brown?
Yes.
And Milky?
Yes.
All yes.
All right, with that, we began to address this last month, but wanted a correction on dates. This is regarding the alternate for the Board of, excuse me, Board of Review. Do we have a clarification on that date? Because my packet arc still shows one twenty-five, twenty twenty-one. I thought that was going to be to line up with the other terms.
It will be, but the board had not taken action yet, so it stayed the same on your agenda. It indicates reappoint the alternate with term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, and so for those on the board that are not familiar, the Board of Review, this, the state has laws regarding the terms, and this should be in line with the other appointments that we've made. And so I'd be happy to entertain a motion for Randy Golden.
I move to accept Randy Golden as the alternate member of the Board of Trustees.
We're going to permanent number, right? We're moving him from the alternate to the permanent, I thought.
No.
No, alternate.
He asked be alternate.
Oh, okay, that's right, he did in his pack, absolutely.
And for clarification on that motion, trustee Thering, the date twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, is that accurate?
You know, I don't, it's on my wall, I don't have it in front of me.
It's got to be twenty-two because the rest.
Right.
It is twelve.
I just want to make sure you're okay with that in your motion.
Yes, you said, what did you say? And I'll repeat it.
Twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, okay. So I would move to accept Randy Golden as the alternate member of the Board of Board of Review. Right on, for till to the date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
Support.
Discussion? I'll just say that I know Randy's been on there for a while, and with every member that serves on our boards, I'm grateful for their service to their community.
Randy has been and will continue to be an excellent member of the Board of Review. I enjoyed working with him in the, in the few times that he's had to fill in, so we're getting a good guy.
Seen all their hands. Clerk Cody, would you take a roll call vote?
Trustee Houk?
Yes, but I lost everyone.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
And trustee Thering?
Yes.
All yes.
All right, we currently have two applications for the planning commission. We have one spot that's been open for, I believe, some time now. I couldn't tell you the exact date, but we've had a long open seat. And because of trustee Theron's recent election, he's had to step down from the planning commission. So that seat was opened up, I believe, last week. And at this point, I would like to nominate Jessica Lap, the planning commission.
Support.
Okay.
With the expiration of.
Sorry.
I got, I got Bill, our trustee Howk on speakerphone, so he can still hear everything.
Okay.
He did because he's rebooting.
Um.
Can you hear him, Bill?
He nominated Jessica Lap, if you didn't hear that, and it was supported by Connie Bills.
And the expiration date on that is two February fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Is that right? That's right.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's finishing up the term that Webster had.
Yes.
Would she start immediately and then continue on?
Yes. So she's gonna finish up the roughly just over two year, two years of the three year term. If I have that math correct. Any other discussion? None. Clerk Cody, would you do the honors?
All right, I'll do trustee Bill or Howk.
Yes.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasure Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
And trusty Bill.
Yes.
All right, and I want to thank Brian Smith also for his application, and so I want to keep that in front of us. But I'm not gonna fill the other appointment tonight because that seat just became open, and I'd like to make sure the public has the opportunity. We haven't taken new applications since February of last, this, this year. I'd like to make sure that we as a board begin to reach out and make sure that people that want to serve have the, have the opportunity. And if they don't have interest in the planning commission, by the way, we do need someone for the board of review.
Sidewalks and pathways.
And sidewalks and pathways. Thank you, trustee Bills. We have a November monthly activity report put together by our manager and staff. Is there any questions or comments on that? I'm not seeing any, so I'm, I'm gonna ask her or make a couple of comments, I guess, and give people opportunity to raise their hands. I'd just like to point out something that I noticed, which is in a bit of an uptick in how do I enforcement of our ordinances. And this particular monthly activity report, if you, if you put the three sections together that it's hailed, it's just about a full page. And I see that the new bureau violation ordinance that we put into place this last month, I'm assuming that had some effect in what we're seeing because we had compliance being brought with the potential threat of citation in some cases. Others were, they were more than happy to come in compliance without that kind of threat. But I'm thrilled to see that the work that this board passed this last month with the work of our staff and helping it come to fruition. Thank you, Mr. Nanny. So if you haven't looked at those sections, it's, it's, it's awesome to see. And I only highlight that because I've been pushing for this issue since about twenty thirteen. And we finally have something I'm really proud of with regards to this. Any other comments on this? Questions? I see none.
I have, I have one. I'm sorry, I'll raise my.
Trustee Bills.
So in this significant item, in the significant items of interest longer term section on page fourteen, it says that we want to consider, where am I at? The Bluegrass Road problem. It says unanticipated issue with easements. We've been talking about this for two years and on sidewalks and pathways. So I don't, I don't know what's unanticipated.
Where are you at on your, on that report? I get, I have the page with which item?
It's the third item down on the significant items under sidewalk, the first sidewalks item.
Yes, we had some activities planned for Bluegrass, Bloomfield, Lincoln Road. There's three areas listed there. And this reference particularly to the issue with, I think has more to do with Lincoln Road than anything.
Okay, so are we gonna be doing anything on Bluegrass? I'm just curious.
We have, and I don't look, we have money in our twenty twenty one budget for sidewalks throughout the community. I'm sure Broomfield is there. There's a lot of work to do to get there. And one of which is easements often in several cases.
So is there some, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask one more thing. Is there any way to get a list of the projects that are going to be on the slate?
Certainly, and I believe those are in our twenty twenty one budget, but I can put together a list in a more concise fashion.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
I actually do have one question. I'm assuming Mr. Nanny is probably best to answer this, but Mark, if you feel differently, that's fine. Regarding the Duncan Donuts development that was in the note, that's over on Isabella and Broomfield, I believe. I'm asking this only because I sat on the planning commission. We first approved the site plan for that. They must have updated their site plan. Is that accurate?
Actually, what was approved before was a special use permit. What they're, what they
Oh, right.
Pursuing now is the site plan. They ran into a hang up related to the changeover to our new ordinance, and that's actually an item that I'll be talking about in a moment and is part of my report.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments regarding monthly activity report? If you're a member of the public and you haven't looked at this in our packet before, it's worth the time. It tells you what's going on in our township and the great work that's being done by the staff and our manager. With that, we're up to Mr. Nanny's spot, the planning commission and Z B A updates by the community and economic development director. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of items. First of all, the zoning board of appeals met in December, right after our general election. They did not have any, any applications. We, we had a meeting to hold a training session with the board of appeals to familiarize them with our new zoning ordinance that went into effect in late September. And the board of appeals also adopt, approve their annual report. They make an annual report to the planning commission. And they reported a very quiet year. They only had three meetings and only one actual application during the course of the whole, whole year. The, the December media of the zoning board appeals has been canceled. We did not have any applications for it. So they, they will not be meeting again until at least January. The planning commission met, had a regular meeting on November seventeenth via Zoom. The, the big item on the agenda, as was just mentioned, was a rezoning hearing. The applicant is a company called Greeling Investors, but this is regarding a development project that they're interested in doing on the southwest corner of Broomfield Road and Isabella Road. As the supervisor mentioned, it's a Dunkin' Donuts filling station, drive through restaurant. This is a project that had received a special use approval some time ago. They were delayed for various internal reasons in getting a site plan application in. And despite giving them several warnings that they, about the new ordinance coming, they did not get that site plan application in until our new ordinance was in effect for about three days. And so they fell under the new ordinance, which happens to have a change in it related to drive through restaurants. This property was split zoned, partly B four and partly B five. The old ordinance of both districts allowed drive through restaurants. The new ordinance, the B four district no longer allows drive throughs. It's to, to try to make the B four more of a pedestrian oriented district, more, more walk, walkable district rather than auto oriented, oriented. And the result of that was suddenly that their project, the site plan didn't work as they had originally intended it. Because part of their drive through was going to be in the area zone before. So they had, they elected to pursue a rezoning application. And that was on the planning commission agenda for November seventeenth for a hearing. The planning commission did hold that hearing. And ultimately, after a good bit of discussion, they did make a recommendation to, to adopt a zoning change to, to reason the property so it would all be within the B five highway business district. That application will be coming before you, most likely at your December meeting for your review. It's currently in front of the county planning commission, which is one of the requirements of our state zoning act, that the county has an opportunity to look at any township rezoning application. So they are going to be reviewing it at their December meeting. In addition to the hearing, the planning commission also set their twenty twenty one meeting schedule, including a joint meeting with the sidewalk and pathways committee, which will be held in January. And, and also approved their annual report to you, which is in your packet tonight. And then finally, they, they have been having a continuing discussion about implementation of the master plan. Looking at, looking at the action plan component of that document and looking at prioritizing perhaps some projects or prioritizing some areas to look at for implementation of that document over the long term. They've been focusing most recently on, on housing concerns and trying to develop a greater understanding of, of housing issues in the area. So that discussion was held. That I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Not seen any other hands. I do have a couple quick comments, or I get these questions regarding the planning commission report. It talks about the review, the guide for defensible decision making. That is awesome to see. So I'm assuming that you helped lead that, Mr. Nanny?
I, I did. I, I wrote the, the article that we used for that, that, that discussion.
No way. Oh, I want your autograph.
Pretty impressive.
Oh, with, with that, this was the question. I was really happy to see it. One, I'm assuming you're doing the same with the Z B A and making sure that they know how to make proper decisions that are defensible in court. Yes.
We did. Yes, we actually had that training session in March.
That's what I was remembering, but I wanted to just lift it back up. I thought I had remembered that correctly. Regarding the master plan and implementation discussion, I just want to lift up for, I'm sure Lisa probably knows this, and maybe James having sat on the planning commission. But the fact that, that they're taking the time to do this is commendable. It is not usual for a planning commission to do anything to what's before them, which is site plans, S U Ps, et cetera, et cetera. And to be forward looking like that, commendable to the planning commission. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Nanny?
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board member reports for, for the board members that have sat on this board before, you know, we all have responsibilities and we report back to this board, some of those responsibilities that are outside. And I'll use Bill as trustee Howk here as an example. He has sat on the Isabella County Road Commission and attends their meetings and then reports that back to us. And we haven't gone through that formal apportionment of responsibilities at this point, but I know some of us may have some reports. So with that, if we have any board member reports, I'll start, start with trustee Howk.
Thank you, Brian. I haven't attended a road commission meeting in the last month because they're all Zoom and they, they're kind of difficult to follow on Zoom. If you're not right there in the room, you can't hear everything. However, I did see, you know, I've talked to him a couple of times. I don't know if anybody's been down Isabella Road, but the Isabella Road project, they said was gonna start this fall, and it has. I mean, rake electric is going down through there. They're getting all the crosswalks put in. Currently, they're on Broomfield and Isabella working. I see also today they were engineering at the corner of High and Isabella to put crosswalk signs in. I'm not sure if that traffic light's gonna go in down on Bluegrass and Isabella yet, but we'll see what happens. So nice to see work progressing on that.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Clerk Cody?
Nothing at this time.
I'm following our previous supervisor's role here because it's different not being a D A as I'm gonna do the circle through the, my Zoom order. Trustee Brown?
Nothing at this time.
Treasure Rice?
Texas. So taxes are almost done. And that, and so you guys can, they, they will be getting at the post office. And that we, we are putting, planning to have them in there on the thirtieth. Because if we do it any sooner than that, people try to pay it and you can't pay till the first. So so therefore, on, hopefully people will be getting them in their mailboxes either the first or second. Because of where it lays, you're more apt to get it on the second, it sounds like, from the post office. Especially due to slower mailings and that kind of thing. So those are all they're, 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 they're in the process, but they will be there for that. And other than that, I think that's it. So we're on, we're on schedule. We're actually ahead of schedule. So that's good.
Thank you. Trustee Bills?
I don't have the, no.
And I don't really either, other than I'm excited to be here with this new crew and I'm looking forward to what we can do in four years. So with that, we'll be moving to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
I'll support it.
Discussion?
I looked everything over yesterday. Brian asked me if I would show the new trustees what to do to look those over yesterday. Jeff and I met. I talked to Connie and to James, and we're gonna meet next month because I have the month of December also. So then I'll meet with those two and show those guys what to do too.
And thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I will point out that it was trustee Worley, who's now retired, whose responsibility it was this month. And Bill was gracious to take that on, and Bill is, is very diligent in, in doing that responsibility. So I was very grateful he's willing to. What's that?
I have questions, but I can ask Mark, Kim and Sherry.
Okay. But I'm grateful for, for you being willing to kind of show the new trustees the ropes on that and take an extra, an extra meeting's worth of warrants. So thank you. Any other discussion on the approval of consent agenda? Seeing none. Clerk Cody, would you do the honors? Seeing none, clerk Cody, would you do the honors?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Howke?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
All right, that takes us to new business on our agenda. The very first item is a request to waive quarterly water bill penalty for P and G, sorry, P and Q properties. Irrigating system located twenty eight fifty three Heath Health Parkway account number zero four two eight two. And with that manager stool dryer, would you be, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you. First off, the board and and the administration received a letter detailing the request from Mr. Larry Sheffert. Hopefully I pronounced that name correctly. If not, I apologize. The letter was received by the township on November twenty third, dated November twenty first. All of the board should have received it electronically and I just want to let the board and Mr. Sheffert know it will be made part of the record. The township ordinance sets fees for late payment at fifteen percent. There are thirty five days to make payment before the penalty is is accrued. The administration's recommending denial of the request. The waiver of penalties can result in unfair treatment of customers that pay on time. Those that pay late but that indeed pay the penalties. And we feel that that maintains fair treatment amongst the water and sewer customers. The board, the customers do have the opportunity to request these waivers of the board of trustees. So that's why it's in front of you tonight with the recommendation that I just discussed. So this is now back to you, the board. Thank you.
I I will make one comment here if I may, and I'm going to address the board on this. When I first went to public comment, I probably was not clear that that was the opportunity for items on this agenda. And I bring that up because I see Mr. Shepherd's hand raised. And that would be typically out of order for us to allow that at this point, but being that I was not clear, would the board allow him his three minutes?
I don't have a problem with it.
I'm fine.
It's on the beginning of the agenda. So if he was to see the agenda, he would have seen the public comment. It specifically states it right on our agenda.
It does. I did not state it and I didn't want any misunderstanding. Are you not comfortable with that clerk?
I am not.
Okay, that's fair enough. I just wanted to point it out. All right, with that, discussion, motion?
I I have a question for Ms. Smith. When do the so for example, the quarterly bill went from July first to September thirtieth. When does that bill get printed and mailed? Or what's the process for that?
The meters are read. So the meters are read at the first part of September, usually the second to third and third week of September. And then the bills are mailed the first of October. And then they are due November fifth.
Okay. Is it possible that maybe it got mailed a little bit later than that? Or is that just that happens like clockwork?
No, that that happens like clockwork. I I personally mailed those. They were mailed on time and they're all mailed in one batch. We do a bulk mailing from the post office.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I saw trustee Bill's hand next.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Milky. I do have a comment. The after reading Mr. Shepherd's letter that came in my mailbox, apparently their water use went up twenty times. Is there no we should have some kind of monitoring system for this? That's ridiculous that we that we don't notice a huge. This was a big leak of five million gallons of water. I don't know how we didn't notice that as a township. So for me, I would be comfortable and I don't I don't want to make a motion right now, but I would be comfortable with a partial waiver. But I'm not making a motion right now. And that's all I have.
Trustee Cody, I saw next. Bill, I apologize if your hand was before Lisa's.
No, hers was off. Hers was before mine.
You know, I want to direct this to either Kim or Mark. I did read this as well. Five million gallons seems like an awful lot not to be caught. So I mean, do we have something to, you know, catch that? Or do we have any protocols for that? I mean, because that's, I mean, that's a lot of water, just to be going.
Yeah, I'll address that and it also relates to crusty bills. Question, we we do not and we do not want to be responsible for monitoring customers' usage. We have, I don't know, approximately three thousand customers. I think I have that right. If you look at page and and I understand, you know, five, whatever the number is, you said five million gallons of water. We produce and sell thirty to thirty, I think it's thirty million gallons a month, something like that. There's a graph on our what we produce and sell on page twenty seven of your agenda packet. But you do not, my advice anyways is the township does not want to get into business and monitoring customer usage. And Kim, you're welcome to add to that if you'd like.
Well, I agree with Mark. It would be very difficult for us because we don't have a a system that would automatically tell us that there was a lot of leak there. There's no way for us to do that. So it's just dependent on that you would hope that whoever is reading the meters would know and they wouldn't necessarily know, especially with an irrigation system. Because those fluctuate from year to year and from customer to customer.
You'll get into the issue of somebody's toilets running at a residential house. Bathrooms in the basement, that can consume a tremendous amount of water. And if you get into this habit or this routine, or if we are asked to build a system, you know, we're going to be trying to manage people's water usage and I can just tell you from experience, it won't go well.
So from what I'm reading in this letter also is, you know, it was from they contacted Talon Turf who had repaired it. I mean, it's not sure, like reading it wrong, somebody had broken it. Shouldn't they reach out for that person that broke it and caused the water issue to reimburse them for it? That's what I'm thinking would be the best way for them to go about this. You know, it is their mistake, not ours. So you know, I'm not for reimbursing them for the water usage or wavering it. That's my thought on it.
Just you help?
I did a lot of research on this the last couple of days. Because I always do. I I agree with Connie and Kim. I I think that we need to, Kim Smith, I think that we need to find a way to monitor these things. I called to, excuse me, I called Teal and Turf, a guy that works for them. His son works for us. So I talked to his dad yesterday. And I said, if something like this happens, is there a way that water providers can find this out? And he said that the city of Claire, where he services now, he used to service Mount Pleasant, but now he's got Claire. He said that what happens in Claire, and he gave the example that say a customer uses twenty thousand gallons of water a month. Well, all of a sudden it spikes up to eighty. Well, the city of Claire calls that customer and says, hey, you know, do you have a sprinkler system or is a water line broken in your house? Or are you washing a bunch of vehicles or something like that? He said that that's what happens in Claire. So I'm just kind of surprised that we couldn't find a way to especially five million gallons of water. I mean, do we have quadrants where it's in where we can see? You know, why is so much water being used in area four compared to what was used in area four three months ago? I mean, I know it's kind of hard to regulate all that, Kim, but I would think that we should be able to find a a way to monitor some of this. I agree with Lisa. I have a business. I have liability insurance. I work somewhere. I break something. The homeowner, the business, I'm responsible for fixing it. My liability insurance covers that. Whoever broke the water line, the sprinkler line, I don't know why P and Q properties hasn't gone back on them. I also wonder, I wish I could ask a question here and get an answer, but I don't think we can in our format. I want to know if P and Q properties gets reimbursed for the water bill that they already paid. I know they have a lease or that McLaren leases their space and I'm assuming that when they pay their bills, they pass those along to McLaren. And then I'm assuming that McLaren reimburses them. So those are just my opinions. And I am probably not for relieving the penalties.
And just if I may to clarify, the issue in front of you is the waiver of the penalty. Not the X X excess water usage.
Well, it just seems to me like five million gallons. I mean, how many what does one of our water towers hold? How many gallons of water does one of our water towers hold?
Two of them hold two hundred thousand. One of them holds five hundred thousand.
Wow, well, we're dumping one out ten times and we don't notice that. I just don't. We've got to find a way to monitor something like this. My God.
I agree.
Can't believe we can't monitor. You know, that's, Mark said we use thirty million gallons a month. Well, that's one sixth of the water use for.
I I can't and we won't speak to the excess usage. I don't have those records in front of me. But we average over a million gallons a day.
Monitor things.
Well, I mean, even even consumers will let me know if I'm thirty percent higher in a month or something or fifty percent higher. So it's it's an electronic communication. It doesn't take staff time to do that. It it's electronic when you have a system set up.
Well, and again, this is not an agenda item. I'm happy to research anything that the board collectively wants us to look at. But we would have to examine a lot of things if you wanted us to go down that road. And if you do, that's up to the board. You just need four of you to do something.
Trustee Thering?
You know, I I understand the importance of a late fee, just like working with Rodney and the planning commission and ordinances and violations. So there's an incentive for things to be taken care of. I just I and I'm not necessarily against a fifteen percent late fee. Typically, you know, if somebody had a a water bill that was normally eighty dollars and now it's two hundred and fifty dollars, fifteen percent isn't that much. In this particular case, we're talking about, you know, twelve hundred and forty eight dollars. I I guess in my mind, it's it's well within the right to ask for that. This is not a surprise. This has been out there, but I'm just wondering if there if maybe this is, I apologize, Mark and Kim, if this is the inappropriate time to ask, but fifteen percent up to a certain cap for maybe thirty days. And then you could, you know, go from there. I understand I'm getting a little bit off the path as well in talking about this issue. Again, I'm not against the late fee. I just twelve hundred dollars seems like an awful awful lot after just paying an eight thousand dollar water bill. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to jump in here. It seems to me that what I've heard from our board is there may be desire or no desire to look at two different distinct things unrelated to the request before us. Well, there's they're related, but one is what trustee Thering just listed, which is maybe looking at the ordinance. You suggested a cap. If that's something we want to look at, we certainly have the right to do so. Our current ordinance doesn't allow wiggle room from our public works department there. So if we have an issue with that, that's something we can look at. And with regards to what trustee Bills first brought up, as our manager said, if that's something we want to explore, then we should take action and request that of our staff. So I want to bring us back to what's before us. And regarding that, I tend to agree with clerk Cody in that if it were my business that this happened to, I'd be going after in this case, whoever dug up my water line and caused this to happen. And I would hope that our public works department, if that were to if Mr. Seifert were to do that, would provide him with any information they need to follow up and and get restitution on that. Bill, I think you froze. Do we have a motion out here?
There has not. What I would do also is when I get a bill, even if I don't believe it, I'm responsible for it. I would pay it first. So I think that you know, that should have been paid first.
I I would agree with that. I had the same thought. Would someone here like to make a a motion? We can have continued discussion if need be.
I move to deny the request for waiver of fees.
Their support?
I'll support.
All right, further discussion?
Would you explain what a yes vote is and a no vote is just so we're clear on that?
As as I heard it from trustee Bills and correct me if I get your motion correct, the motion was to deny the request for the waiver of the penalty fees. So yes, would mean those penalty fees must be paid in full. A vote no would mean that that motion failed.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Trustee Brown?
Yes, um, since this has just came in front of me in in the in the last few days. By one, I guess this might be directed to Mark. This five million gallons of water usage, this was completely paid for, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And two, without having all the knowledge I feel in front of me, are the fines still being assessed or are they frozen at this point?
The the status of the bill is there's a balance due. Guessing it's in the range of twelve hundred dollars. But because the the there's an amount due on the bill, it 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 will proceed through the process and if 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 there's an amount delinquent long enough on a bill, you come under the Delinquent long enough on a bill, you come under the water shut off. Procedure and routines.
But does it continue to accrue more fees is what he's asking, I think?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I'm asking because I don't feel I'm prepared to vote right now to yes or no on this. And I, I don't know. What the procedure is as far as.
There's likely to be additional penalties accruing. And I think even more important than that is. It becomes subject to water shut off because there's a balance due. And I don't, Kim, you can speak to how far out that shut off process is, but.
Well, the, the shut off is scheduled this, um, in December, for December seventh for this particular billing quarter. This is an irrigation system. I'm sure they've already shut the water off to this, so that's probably not pertinent in this instance. As far as the penalties, no, those are not, we, those are not continuing, continuing to accrue. Um, if they did get to a shut off status, there would be a fee for the shut off status, but. As far as quarterly billing penalties, no, once they're applied, they're applied once to the quarter and then. That's, that's the end of the application. So the bill was due on, um, November fifth and those were applied on November sixth.
Thank you, Kim.
Clerk Cody, did you have something?
So the bill was due on the fifth and then the penalties were applied on the sixth. Is what you just said?
Yes, that's correct.
So if it's two hundred and forty dollars a day, then. It would have been longer than that, right? Oh, they paid their bill.
A fifteen percent penalty accrued on the balance of the bill on the sixth. They paid it, but they only paid the, I'll say, not only, they, they paid the principal amount of the bill. They, they paid the original amount of the bill.
Well, not the late fees.
Not the late.
So if they don't pay the late fees, it keeps going up, or is it just the late fees stay the same?
They stay the same.
But, but as I understood it, because there's a balance, if that's not taken care of, that could lead to the shut off process.
In a normal instance, but this happens to be an irrigation system, so we're assuming it's turned off.
And back to my question to come full circle. Uh, this has to be decided tonight?
Well, if we don't, then it would be shut off.
It is shut off. I just heard from.
December seventh.
December seventh, it gets shut off. Um, be, the, the, the biggest thing with this is, um. You know, yes, it's an irrigation system, so therefore, um, you know, he's. The, it, it's probably, the owner probably turned it off, but the township. Would shut off by the seventh. It's not paid. And if it's not paid. You know, and, and that gets shut off, you know, if, if we were to say table it for the next meeting. Um, if that were to happen, it would be after the shut off date. And I imagine the, the person wouldn't want to pay on it until they know.
Yes.
So, I mean, they would then get more fees on top of that because a shut off happened. If I'm understanding this correctly.
You answered my question perfectly, Kimberly. That's exactly what I was looking for of. If we did table this, if I could get more information, is it going to cost more? That is exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
This board could take additional action. However, there is a motion on the floor at this point. Meaning additional action, for example, if this board decided you could ask for a delay on that shut off until something was resolved. But, um, that's not the, the motion on the floor currently.
I, I do, may I?
Yes.
You know, the one we had a long time ago, I mean, we did back when it was a different board. I apologize if you don't know what I'm referring to, but. Basically, we. Don't waive wait fees because, or waive the late fees because then it shows. Oh, I can pay my bill late. I won't pay it. It's fine. They'll waive it, et cetera, et cetera. I know that twelve hundred dollars is a really big amount and it's. You know, I mean, it's a, you know, it's a building though, so it's not like it's a house or something. You know what I mean? I mean, you got all those apartment buildings. If they don't pay theirs on time, it's way over that twelve hundred dollars. It's all depends on where you're at.
We have any other discussion on this? Seeing none, Clerk Cody, would you? Do us the honor? The motion on the floor, just to be clear, the motion on the floor and correct me if, uh, trustee Bills, if I get this incorrect. Was to deny the request for waiver of the penalty fee.
Correct, sir.
Okay, trustee Bill.
Yes.
Trusty Halk.
Yes.
Supervisor Milky.
Yes.
Treasure Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes.
All right, that takes care of that item. Let me find my agenda. There with me. Terms of virtual meetings, my desk space is not what I'm used to. Uh, that brings us to new business item B. Introduce and conduct a first reading for the proposed new tax exemption ordinance. Manager Steel Dryer, would you like to introduce this or give this to staff to introduce?
Thank you. I'll take care of it. This is, uh, the paperwork for this begins on page. Forty-nine of your agenda packet. We have a series of ordinances on our books that relate to. Uh, what's commonly referred to. Uh, payment in lieu of taxes. We have housing developments that. In working with the state housing development authority. And the various acts that apply to that, uh, they're. They're trying to encourage the development of housing for low and moderate income families. And so there's programs in place that try to facilitate that. As part of that, there needs to be agreements made with local units of government. To, I'll say, classify or declare that the development. Is exempt from the normal ad valorem property taxes, both real and personal. And instead of paying those property taxes. They end up making a payment in lieu of tax, and that's where the term. Pilot comes from. Um, eligibility. For these programs at the state level, which often come in the form of reduced, uh, interest rates on their financing. Requires that. The local unit of government approve these payment lieu of taxes. On our books, currently on our ordinances, we have, I want to say seven of these. We have several different, um, ordinances that are on our books. One, one of those developments never came to fruition, even though the ordinance is still on our books. So I think there's six, maybe five active housing developments that currently make a payment in lieu of tax to the township. And what? What we did as a staff is we evaluated these tax exempt ordinances. That's kind of cumbersome. If there's a name change on one of these, then we have to amend an ordinance. So if there's some ministerial things going on with the development, we have to come back to the board. To amend the ordinance. There are other ways that we can handle facilitating these developments. Uh, the, the way we're recommending is what's in front of you and essentially. We would be rescinding these various ordinances, replacing them with a single ordinance. That then calls for resolutions to be adopted. By the board when each of these individual, if you look forward. An individual development comes along and they qualify for the mission of financing. They want to. Have, they want to be exempt from taxes, then a resolution would come before the board instead of an ordinance. So that's, that was why we initiated this. Uh, just to kind of clean up some administrative. And some confusion. If you look closely at the various ordinances, they're not, they're not identical. The ordinance in front of you does several things. It reaffirms the township's commitment. To supporting the goal of encouraging. Housing for, uh. Low and modern income, uh, persons and families. Like I said, it would replace these half a dozen ordinances with a. Uh, single ordinance, the format would reduce cost to the township in terms of. Managing and amending the ordinance book. It would establish a consistent set of standards. Uh, for eligibility that are outlined in your proposed ordinance. It would also, uh, provide for uniform and a bit more robust monitoring. Of these developments to ensure that they are providing the reporting that's required. That they're required to make and also ensure that their payments are being made. Timely. If eventually this ordinance is approved. Then of course we have to do something with all these ordinances that are on the books. And we could envision. Resolutions coming to the board in December, maybe January. Where we kind of move these existing. Developments that have existing pilots under their ordinance. We wouldn't be changing any of those individually. Any of those criteria. To get the old, you know, format that works with the new ordinance. So that's what we're doing here. It's continuation of, uh, managing and modernizing our ordinances. And it's fundamentally to facilitate the development of low income. Housing to help make it more affordable. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Trustee Halk?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to introduce and conduct the first reading for the proposed new tax exemption ordinance.
For.
Uh, discussion trust, or I'm sorry, Clerk Cody, almost called you trustee.
I'm sorry. Okay, so.
You are a trustee too.
Question, okay, so. We're introducing first reading to. A tax exempt ordinance, but it's changing all these other ordinance. Shouldn't we have to do one for each one?
As part of this ordinance, there's a. Clause at the end, I believe. Titled. Repeal section fourteen. And it would then appeal the, all the existing ordinances. I believe I have that right, Rodney.
That is correct.
I apologize. I haven't seen one done like this yet, so. Okay.
Mean no other hands at this point. I, I'm gonna jump in. Regarding a couple of these projects, I mean, let, let me just state this first and foremost. Uh, having availability to low income housing in our community is, is crucial. And, uh, pandemic that we've had this year, um, just lifts that need up ever more. Uh, when you see the number of people. That are, that are struggling to get food, um, because of unemployment issues, uh, this is, this is critical. And you know, poverty is something that does exist. In our community, whether we like to, uh, ad- admit it or not. And so this is a very important, um, issue to me. And I've been involved in some of these, uh, ordinances in the past. And I was, in particular, one in, uh, I was curious about, and I don't know. If it's fair to ask the question at this point, but regarding the crisis center, uh, North Wind's apartments. It says that the project no longer qualifies for pilot. Do we know why that is? They moved away from that or something they did or?
I don't. I. Well, if, if it doesn't qualify is because of their offering. You know, the business model must have changed. Uh, they're providing, you know, market rents to their tenants or something along those lines.
Interesting. Uh, that, that doesn't seem like something the crisis center would encourage.
I can't speak to those kinds of things.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. I, I mean, I was, I worked on that in particular with the crisis center to bring that pilot to fruition. Uh, back in the day, apparently in, uh, twenty sixteen is when we amended it. Any other discussion? There, the motion on the floor was to introduce and conduct a first reading for the proposed new tax exemption ordinance. See no other hands raised? Clerk Cody, would you do us the honor?
Clerk Cody, yes. Trustee Halk.
Yes.
Supervisor Milky.
Yes.
Trustee Bills.
Yes.
Trustee Thering.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
And Treasure Rice.
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, uh, moving along to, uh, last new business item, uh, item C. Board approved of, oh, we're going to be looking at the budget amendments pro- proposed, um, in front of us. And with that, I'd be happy to hand it over to the manager to introduce if you'd like.
Thank you. Uh, this is what we refer to as budget amendment number two. Typically, we ha- we amend the budget. In, in, in this fashion, kind of a wholesale amendment, if you will, twice a year, one in, one time at mid-year. And then the other time towards the end of the year as we begin to prepare for audit. The, uh, paperwork for this starts on page fifty-seven of your agenda packet. There's a memo that goes into some detail as to what's being amended, why. Uh, following that. That memo, which is several pages long. You will see, uh, a detailed line item report. That at the account level is showing the, um, amendment. I'm not going to go through all of the line item detail that starts on page. Sixty-five of your agenda packet. Nor am I going to just reread the memo that's in your packet. Um, but what I will do is just highlight a couple of things out of it. Uh, regarding the general fund. Uh, the net. Uh, change in revenue is an increase of eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, amending the revenue budget upward. On the expense side, there's a net reduction in expenses that result from. Um, this amation of all the positives and negatives across the various line items. It reduces expenses by four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It crosses essentially all departments. And many line items within each department. The net impact on the amended budget is to increase the projected year-end fund balance. When compared to the existing budget by five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and some change. That's an increase in fund balance, which is, is another way of saying it's adding money to the bank. As it relates to the fire fund. The net effect of the revenue and expenses on the fire fund is to. Is to increase that projected year-end fund balance by thirty. is to increase that projected year-end fund balance by thirty thousand eight hundred dollars. The two percent fund, we do have a revenue increase in this amendment of fifty thousand dollars. That's related to the fall two percent grant award that we were just notified of earlier this month. That's the two percent tribal grant program. We received fifty thousand dollars to go towards uh the expenses associated with pump station number one uh rehabilitation. That was an application we submitted back in November, or I'm sorry, uh September probably. Uh we were not awarded the full amount of the grant request, but we're very appreciative of the fifty thousand dollars that we were awarded. Uh we, we are decreasing expenses in the two percent fund primarily due to projects that we had originally budgeted for to occur in twenty twenty. We weren't able to execute some of those, so they were removing them, we were removing the funding from the twenty twenty budget. And you would see that funding uh move over to the twenty twenty-one recommended managers budget, so it's shifting it from year to year. And since we don't plan on, uh we won't be able to complete those projects in twenty twenty, we're removing them from, from the budget in twenty twenty, but reinstating them in twenty twenty-one. The same concept is holding true for both the West and the East DDA funds. Um those, the reason for those budget amendments is primarily moving projects from twenty to twenty-one. On the West DDA fund, the net impact is to increase projected year-end fund balance by three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. But again, we'll be, you'll be seeing those expenses in the twenty-one recommended budget. On the uh East DDA, it's the, the balance is to increase projected fund balance by two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. I will point out that the EDA, the Economic Development Authority uh approved these budget amendments at their November meeting earlier this month. And recommended as part of that action, recommended that the board of trustees approve those two budget amendments specifically. The sewer fund uh revenue is decreasing by two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. A big chunk of that is a, is we're no longer anticipating receiving the contribution from the EDA for their contribution to pump station number one for the reasons I just stated, that project was rolling over, we want. On the expense side, total net expenses are decreasing by two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And the net impact on the fund balance is essentially zero. The revenues are decreasing by essentially the same amount as the uh expenses, so the net effect is, is almost zero. The water fund, net revenue from the various adjustments is a decrease of sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Um on the expense side, the, the net expense reduction is sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So the net impact on the fund balance is forty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. That was just the highlights of what is in your packet from a memo perspective. And the memo again is a distill, is distilling down all the uh detail that's in your line item. Uh but we are prepared to answer any specific questions at any level of detail that you may have. Thank you.
Trustee Houck.
Hey, yeah, I got one. Um being that on page fifty-eight, top item, decreased budget by eight thousand dollars and trustee supervisor departments in recognition for professional development, lodging, meals, transportation, mileage reimbursement that was unused. Can we buy new laptops with that money instead, like we've talked before? I mean, you know, we were saying that we needed to find the money to do it, well, we didn't use our budget, so I'm for making a proposal that we buy new laptops for all of us, so we don't have to screw around with these things. I don't know if that's appropriate now or not, Brian, but.
I, I think it's worth bringing up, I, I mean, that's not what's before us, but if you'd like to, we can ask for that to be on our next agenda so that I think Mark has done some work on this to look at costs and.
What, what I'd recommend in that regard is that good, the, the, the net of, the, the, the funds are flowing to fund balance, which will have the effect of increasing the twenty-one twenty-one projected beginning year fund balance. So I think the easiest place to have the discussion and provide for the funding, if that's where the board ends up, is during your twenty twenty-one budget approval process.
Yeah, yeah, next month, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh trustee Bills.
I just wanted to say I looked through it and I thought it looked fine to me.
Um I, I have, I think just, well, I have two questions. Um this is more curiosity, I'm happy to see the adjustments that are being made. Um but I just want to make sure I understand a couple of things. Uh regarding parks and rec, um I see a decrease of expenses of basically fifty-eight thousand dollars. I was, I was surprised by that one because we actually ended up mid-year buying a new playground set. Um it thanks to assistance with the city and then the, the labor involved to put that in. And looking through the notes, I see that our picnic tables, um I'm trying to look at what else I remember from that. But there were things that went down, but I was just surprised that, that um it dropped that much. And I was kind of curious if you'd just explain a little bit better with parks and recs. Why that we didn't have the expenditures? Or if, if you're not prepared to, to do that now, I'm happy to have that discussion later.
I think we can probably have it now. Seventy-nine of your agenda packet. You'll see a whole series of line items. And you know, the, the salary of wages, because the parks were closed, we were cutting grass less. Oh, yeah, that alone, seven thousand dollars, and that's just the salary, you know, piece of it. Everything on page seventy-nine related to that, temporary labor, seven thousand three hundred, all the benefits associated with it, you know, it does, it does add up. Um if you flip over to page eighty, we had eighteen, we're, we're removing fourteen thousand dollars. Um we were not able to get to the development of the master plan that we'd originally had in the twenty twenty budget to have done uh by an outside consultant. We never got around to that, so we're removing that out of the budget. You'll see that in the twenty twenty-one recommended budget, but now we're looking to do most of that work in-house instead.
Actually, that, that's really helpful. Yeah, that's actually very helpful. All right, um do we have a motion out there? I do not recall. Or do we have additional questions, comments, motion regarding the proposed budget amendment? Uh clerk Cody.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty twenty budget amendment number two for general fund, fire fund, tribal two percent fund, east DDA fund, west DDA fund, sewer fund and water fund.
Support.
I think I heard Kim first, is that right? All right, further discussion, questions? See nobody jumping up. Last call, clerk Cody, would you do us the honor, please?
Uh trustee Thering.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Supervisor Milky.
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes, trustee Houck.
Yes.
Treasurer Rice.
Yes.
And trustee Bills.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, all right, that finishes our new business. Uh we'll open up extended public comment. This is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue, uh unlike the first public comment, which, which was restricted to items on the agenda. Uh if you do choose to speak, make sure you state your name and address for the record. Um this is not a question and answer session. If you have questions for the township, uh please call township hall, publish on our webpage, also nine eight nine seven seven two forty-six hundred. And with that, we will open up extended public comment at eight forty-one PM. And again, for those in the public, uh raise your hand. Uh yes, we have a, do you see him, Mark, Mr. Safer? I, if I hope I said your name correctly.
Shepherd.
Shepherd.
Uh yes, uh my name is Larry Shepherd, uh my address is uh ten twenty-one Green Banks Drive. I'm sorry, I didn't get an opportunity to speak earlier regarding the uh, the P and Q issue and I'm I'm sorry that the vote didn't go the way I'd hoped. I uh, I know in the past that there's been precedent where you have waived those, those fees. This I s- I believe was a punitive fee. Um coming on top of a eighty-five hundred dollar water bill that, that uh kind of blindsided us, you know, to pile on another twelve hundred dollar uh fee, uh I, I think is, is just punitive. You, you have the ability to to review that and waive it, and you could even uh postpone the shut off and bring it up at, at a later date. My, I, I guess I'd like you to think about, um you know, I'm a, I'm, I'm a businessman and this is a big hit to me. Uh but I, I can also pay, but what, what do you do in the case of, of a person who's just scratching by? What if this happened to them? Would you just pound them into the ground, shut off their water and say, well, tough luck, you know, too bad for you? So I, I hope you address this issue, um you know, review an upper limit to that, you know. It, like I said, twelve hundred dollars is, is extremely punitive coming on, on top of a eighty-five hundred dollar bill. And again, I, I'd like to say that you have in the past waived these fees and um I hope you'd uh possibly reconsider it, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. Uh looking for other raised hands. Manager's tool dryer, we have Ben iPad.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, good evening.
Um first of all, I, I um welcome all the new trustees and you're kind of getting thrown right into the cauldron, the first meeting, having to make a tough decision.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, would you just state your name and address for the record?
Sorry, it's Ben Gunning, twenty-two seventy, twenty-two eighty, East Broomfield Road, Bon Pleasant.
Thank you.
And again, you know, you, you folks have got thrown into the cauldron and had to make a tough decision. Um I guess I'm, as you know, I've sent a letter um that I was hoping trustee or supervisor Milky would read. Um that uh I felt that there was some warrant to um Mr. Shepherd's request. So um I guess the deliberation was a little confusing from the standpoint that didn't seem like everybody had all the information, so. Um or weren't quite sure what kind of decision to make. So um hopefully in the future, you know, people will be more prepared. Um the other thing that I do want to mention is that in our last meeting and the last board, we had mentioned, and I hope the discussion comes up in final board comment, about the wages for our clerk. Um she did absolutely fabulous job in an incredibly difficult situation and is grossly underpaid. So I'm hoping that you folks bring it up during final board comment and see fit to give her uh an appropriate salary increase, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Looking for any other hands? Give it just.
The board's gonna speak now.
Am I hearing?
Oh, Mr. Shepherd is still on.
The text worked, yeah.
Uh see no other hands requesting the floor. We'll close extended public, public comment at uh eight forty-six PM. And with that, we're to item twelve on our agenda, the manager's comments, and you'll want to unmute.
Thank you, and I just have a couple, the uh first, I'm uh really looking forward to working with the new board. Uh all seven of you as a group, and I congratulate all the new members of the board. I do uh encourage you to call me anytime. Uh I believe in some of the uh earlier emails I've sent to you. I've given you my cell number, feel free to use that. You can call me twenty-four seven about um any item you may have. And as we come up towards year end, particularly as it relates to the budget, I know it can be overwhelming. Lot of terminology that you may not be familiar with. I'm happy to meet with, with the three of you uh as a group, individually, you know, anytime you want, so I just, I just want to make sure you, you're aware of that offer and, and I hope and encourage you, uh that you take me up on it. The reminding the board, we have policy, governance, education scheduled. Believe you're all aware of that, December second and December ninth. Both those will be before our next regularly scheduled uh board meeting. Um we have some of the board may recall, the new board may or may not know, but the township initiated a more fulsome cross connection inspection program earlier this year. And we contracted with an outside company called Hydro Corp to help do that. That uh program is starting to get underway. We've issued uh or, or soon to issue a press release on it. We're also doing a mailing, an introductory mailing to all the residential accounts. The commercial accounts are, are more used to the cross connection inspection program. Uh we are emphasizing the uh the COVID situation and, and and we've included language that explains what the inspectors' protocols are from Hydro Corp. And we're certainly sensitive and they're sensitive to, to COVID. And if, you know, people don't want to set these appointments quite yet, you know, we can always circle back with them, but I want to let you know that we're starting uh kind of roll that out. And then lastly, uh just kind of want to touch base, and it might be sort of uh related to trustee Houck's comments about the computers. Um I believe you would all get a hard copy of your agenda packet. Uh either available for pickup or mailed to you. This, this week's packet was a hundred pages, there's quite a bit of work involved with that. I know a lot of board. I know a lot of boards have now just begun. They only receive electronic copies. I believe you also get an electronic copy. I'd like to encourage the board to tell me to not keep mailing you and putting together all that all that paper. There's a lot of staff work that goes along with printing them and collating them and getting them ready for mailing. So I'll just throw that out there, something to think about. And thank you, and again, look forward to working with everybody and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So this is item thirteen. I'm sorry, you have a question?
Um, in in regards to, you know, what what Mark was just talking about, about electronic copies and that kind of thing. One of the things I have brought up every single board, and I'm going to bring it up now because he touched on it, is, you know, the possibility of us going like, you know, doing it all electronic. Seems how we're already doing our Zoom meetings and that as well. I mean, is there interest in only doing electronic packets and that kind of thing, trying to save all that time and energy that I know Jennifer is constantly having to do all those things, and there's other people as well. But I I know she's constantly printing the stuff out and that for the packets and making sure they're all organized and that. And seems how we all are being issued a computer anyway. I mean, is there interest in people doing all electronic?
Definitely for all paperless. I'm using my personal computer, which I'm pleased to do. I just would need, that's the only one I've got, so I would need something that I could have in front of me. And I don't know what it is that you, what you're using, but have to to have the packet to follow along, but absolutely anything to be environmentally friendly, I'm all for. And thank you, Jennifer, for all the work that you do.
Yeah, for sure, Jennifer. Thank you. And I'll second that. I I'm good with electronic, and I have another monitor, so I can have two screens. That's that's not a problem at all. Putting that much work into it and copying all the paper and everything like that will probably pay for the computers over a year of just saving time, I think. So I'm I'm all for it, for sure.
Trustee Bills?
Yeah, I agree. This was, when I heard it was a hundred pages, I was like, holy cow, that's a ton of paper. And we usually get a hundred pages every month?
Um, sometimes there's more.
Often more.
Yeah. There can be quite a few, and and when you're having to do that much, that's that's why I've been trying to get a board that'll say, yay, let's just go electronic, save some work for people. Save some environmentally friendly. Save the environment a little bit. Uh oh, Bill, Bill needs his packet, right?
This was from two meetings ago. You can lift it. You can lift weights with it.
Oh, my God.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mark. I really appreciate that, and I appreciate your door being open for us. I I will need your assistance, I'm sure, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. I just wanted to, I wanted to thank you personally.
I I do, too.
Do I'll respond to Mark's question about electronic packets as well. I'm very supportive of it. It is a little more difficult with Zoom because you've got the Zoom meeting in front of you. So in this case, I'm using my own laptop, but I agree with what trustee Thering said. It's nice to have a secondary one that you have the agenda, especially when you're trying to go through it, and you're not losing sight of the people that you're working with, or the public for that matter. The one time that I felt the electronic packet wasn't as useful was on the planning commission. And Lisa may know this, because of the plans, some of the plans that you have, it's very helpful to have the paper in front of you, but it's, I always felt the planning commission, if all we had was the plans on paper, then the rest could be electronic. But in any event, Treasurer Rice?
Um, just kind of a follow up. With, I guess with that, Mark, does that give you enough, or should I make a motion for that? Because I mean, it sounds like they're all on board.
Oh, I thought we weren't supposed to make motions.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay.
Put it on the next agenda, though.
On the next agenda.
That's what we already said we were going to do.
But.
Okay, sorry.
The motion should, the motion should actually say specifically, like, again, I want to, I'd be happy to use my personal commuter for
Right.
for the Zoom meeting, but just like a little iPad tablet or something that that possesses the.
Yeah, the, if if I may, just briefly, and then we can finish this piece of the conversation. I get a sense that people want to move that way. I don't even know if a motion's needed at the end of the day, but I I don't, I want to make sure we do it deliberately. And I want to make sure that that the people, because not everybody has a a device. I think one of the requirements would be that the township provide some sort of device, and I don't know what that is, to each of these seven elected officials, if you're going to go paperless. You know, so I I just kind of wanted to test the waters, but, you know, it's possible that a trustee member, whether now or in the future, that, you know, doesn't own a computer. So it may not just be that straightforward. And if you're asking an elected official to participate in these meetings, and you want to go electronic, then you may need to think about, you know, back to trustee Houck's comments about providing the device to do that effectively.
One thing you could do, though, just is make it so that it would be not be available unless requested in advance.
Yep.
Okay. Item thirteen, final board member comment, and I'll just kind of do roundtable. I'll start the other way this time. So trustee Bills?
Yes, I have at least one thing, but I, yeah, two things, because I I agree about the the cap on the fees. I think that we should bring that up and vote on it, or put it in. I don't know how we do it, but I think we need that as an agenda item. The other thing is, I want the, I would like to request that the staff looks into how to monitor the, you know, catastrophic water loss. That is, should be standard in today's age. I think that is, there's no reason we shouldn't be able to get that implemented, so I would like to look into that.
Are you good?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Trustee Thering?
Mark, thank you for the offer of help in Lake Jeffin County. Said I will definitely be knocking on your door at some point in time. Thank you, sir. Anybody, if anybody has anyone interested in the board review and they're a little bit shy, please give me their information or give them my information. I'd be happy to talk to them. And just let them know what's expected and what you do, and it's a great group. And there's a couple of guys here, all of the three, including the alternate that are on there, excellently. You won't get lost. So if anybody's interested, please contact me, and I can, I'd be happy to talk to you.
Treasurer Rice?
Um, I just wanted to speak to something that Mister Gunning was talking about that I had brought up at the last meeting about clerk Cody. She has done so much for the township with, I mean, this past year, these elections, she's she was there so many hours. I mean, after the election was over, she was there until six thirty in the morning, guys. So she was up all the way before that, and I mean, there were thousands of absentee ballots that she had to do. And I would like to see put on the agenda, you know, the the discussion about, you know, possibly having a one time salary adjustment for her. And and that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but
I agree.
She she has had a lot thrown on her plate this year that was not expected and definitely is not
normal.
Not in that salary range. So that's my personal thoughts on that. I'd like to see something put on the next meeting if we could.
Trustee Brown?
I'd just like to thank everybody for the first meeting. That's getting your feet wet, just jumping into the fire. Mark, again, thank you, and Brian, appreciate it. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Very good. Clerk Cody?
I can tell you now that's a new normal for the clerk. There is people on the permanent list, so they will be getting applications every election, so there's, it's an increase no matter what. Yeah.
Can I ask you a question, Lisa?
Yeah.
Regarding that, how much time, and I actually know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it publicly. How much time does it take you to process an absentee ballot from birth to death?
I know it's, you can do, to send them out, you can do about twenty five per hour to receive them, thirty five an hour. So it's it's a timely process, so.
When you process them, actually, I mean, that's what we got the new ballot machine for, is to help process those quicker, right?
Well, that is just to count the ballots. This is to fold them, stick them in the envelope, assign them to the voter, label them, postage them. Because you got to think, you got to fold it, you got to stick it in the secrecy sleeve, you got to put the instructions in there, put it in the other sleeve, close that up, and then put it in the other envelope to mail it. So I mean, it's a big step process. Then you have to write on each one of the envelopes which precinct it is, and then the ballot number on the, you know, the return envelope. And you have to make sure all the addresses are correct, and then receiving them, you have to check those signatures, like, you know, against the the applications and against the, you know, the Q V F, which is the one we have on file. So I mean, you're checking it to get multiple things. And if it doesn't, then you got to contact, or, you know, it doesn't work, you got to reach out to the voter and say, hey, signature doesn't match, can you come and verify, you know, which happens, but not too often. But yeah, it's a timely process. There's nothing you can do to make it go faster.
No, no. Trustee Houck? Thank you.
Can I be the new Norm Whirley?
Yes, you got a parable.
No, I don't have a parable. I'm not that good. I just have a few. I'm like Norm. I have a few. Okay, I had a question. This is probably for Kim Smith. I had a resident ask me why there, the fire hydrants, and James Thering might know this, might be one by your house, why the fire hydrants on West Pickard are covered? Were there new fire hydrants that we got put in, what, last year?
Yeah, there's, I think there's one that's still covered out there. And we need to test it and put it in service, which we'll probably do next spring. The the ones we did before, we had some issues with the bolts and the valves on, so we're waiting on that one until next spring to do that.
But they're all active, though, right? Other than the one.
Except for the one with the bag.
Right, okay. That's what I wanted to know.
The other ones are active.
Okay. I brought this up two or three years in a row here, something that we should consider. We talk about roads and the road commission suggested to me before, and I brought it up to the board, that maybe one of these years, we need to get a road millage. That way, we don't have to worry about as many special assessments. We can use the road millage for that, the money from that. Friday, if I'm correct, it's Phil Mayflower at Rick's Food Center, so I think a lot of us are pretty fortunate here. Maybe we should, you know, maybe we can consider putting something in the Mayflower truck. One other thing that trustee Brown and I talked about, and I hope that we're able to do this, probably not going to be until spring, I would think, but tour of the facilities. One of the things I thought that was best of all, when I first came on here, I guess it wasn't rated first. Came on in my two thousand, you know, November of two thousand sixteen, and I think it was maybe about April of seventeen, we took a tour of the facilities, and I think it'd be good for all of the new board members to see those facilities.
It was nice for the old members, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
When you see the new screw that was put in.
Then I also agree that we need to do something for our clerk. There's intergovernmental meetings that I know former trustee Landon and I went to a lot, and they had one probably about a year ago, something like that. It was either November, December of last year, or whatever. They were surprised that our clerk's not full time. The Deerfield Township clerk brought that up. Lisa wasn't able to make that meeting that night. At those meetings, they highlight, oh, maybe they'll talk about trustees one night. The next night, they might, the next meeting, they might talk about supervisors. A variety of things, but one particular night, they talked about the roles of the township clerk, and people were surprised that our township clerk isn't a full time position with the amount of residents that we have. So that's all I have to say.
Clerk Cody, did you have a question for trustee Houck?
I was just writing, you said it was Friday, Phil Mayflower. Do you know what time it is?
I think it's kind of all day.
All day?
Yeah.
I just wanted to read them.
Do you know any specifics about that, Bill, or can you?
I just usually go, you know, you know, they usually have it sitting there in the corner of right there. Mission and, you know, radio station's usually there. So.
Yeah.
All right, I have a few things, mostly bookkeeping kind of stuff. I'm really grateful for all of you deciding to serve the community in some way. I'm excited for this board. I said it earlier, I'm looking forward to these next four years. The budget, our manager offered to the new trustees, I mean, we've been in the budget process for a little while now to go and meet either individually or together and address any questions you may have or concerns regarding the budget. I just want to point out that we, as a board, certainly can call a special meeting if we choose or need to to go spend time on the budget. We've done one of those. It lasted about forty five minutes. And we have two additional special meetings coming up with policy governance, but, you know, the budget's a pretty critical piece. In fact, it's our top statutory duty, right? So if, I just want to lay it out there that if if there's a need beyond even just the new trustees that you have questions, maybe we call a special meeting. The.
I like that, too.
Okay, maybe would we want Jennifer to try to schedule through Doodle Poll? It's not Doodle Poll you use anymore, it's something, a new one. Would we like to request that? Making some nods?
If people, they should, then then we we should probably see about getting one scheduled, yes.
Yeah, definitely.
Jennifer, would you be willing to send something out with some proposed dates? Am I out of line, manager, to ask Jennifer to do that? Maybe I should ask her manager to have that taken care of.
That'd be better.
Okay. I I mean, you often have Jennifer responsible for that, so my apologies for overstepping if I did. Mark, would you?
Yeah, there've been, we'll we'll send something out, we'll try to get a sense of availability, and then we'll need to go through the routine that some of you are aware of, that we need to do to hold, to call a special meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And I'll just bring up, I want to comment on trustee Houck's comments regarding the road millage. You know, budgets are going to be a little tighter this year, and who knows how long the code effect is going to affect us as far as revenue sharing at the state level. And when we put as much as we do of our budget And when we put as much as we do of our budget into roads, I mean, our, our drop in revenue is obviously going to affect what we could do on roads. And, um, I don't, I don't take that decision lightly about doing a road millage because now you're asking taxpayers to pony up. That's a big deal. Um, but I'm certainly open to having that discussion, Bills. Mid, Midland has it very successfully. Um, also, I just want to point out the, if you remember this board, uh, joined the city and the Mount Pleasant School District in creating a rec authority for aquatic center or re, regional rec authority. Uh, reminder that we have two board positions to fill. I've been actively trying to recruit and working with, um, I, I think they were called the Swim Friends. And, and, you know, my goal in recruiting is trying to find people that have the right skillset and have a passion for it because that first year or two of that board is going to take a lot of work and a passion for them to be, have a chance of being successful. But I did want to remind you that we have those spots to fill. And with that, uh, we have no closed session tonight. I'd be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Support.
All in favor? Say aye.
Well, did Bill, Bill have something?
I was, well, just quickly, I was going to say about a road millage, there are three other townships in Isabella County that have a road millage.
I didn't know that. Uh, trustee Thering, did you have something?
No, I was going to say aye at the appropriate time.
Okay. We have motion.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.